There she is.
All right, good, good morning and welcome to the workshop on the five-year financial forecast. It is August 12th, 2025 at 9:00 a.m. to get started this morning. Commissioner Canard, would you like to lead us in the invocation? And Commissioner Finnegan, could you lead us in the pledge? If you could please rise.
Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you in prayer this morning again so thankful for the many blessings in our lives. Lord, we pray, we pray for those who are struggling today. We pray that they would feel the comfort of your embrace. We pray that you would be with us here today as we go about the county's business throughout the day. Pray that you'd not only give us the right words to use to communicate our messages, but Lord, I pray that you'd give us open ears and mind to listen to the viewpoints of others on the board, as well as out in the public who'll be giving their input as well. We pray, Lord, most of all, that you would look over, look over our first responders, both here and afar. Bring them back home safely each and every day. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, the roll call, please.
This is a public workshop of the Citrus County Board of County Commissioners. This 12th day of August 2025. In attendance are Chair Rebecca Bays, First Chair Diana Finnegan, Second Vice Chair Janet Merrick, Commissioner Jeff Canard, Commissioner Holly Davis, County Commissioner, sorry, County Administrator Steve Howard, and County Attorney Denise A. Diamond Lynn.
Thank you very much. This morning, we're going to be joined by PMF, a consulting group that is going to do the presentation on the five-year financial forecast. Welcome. Good morning.
Thank y'all so much for having me. It's a pleasure to be here with y'all this morning. My name is Danielle Scott Parker. I'm a director at PFM and very excited to share with you all the results of the five-year forecast. We've been working with the county over a number of months, and it's been a pleasure working with the entire county team. So I'll jump right into the presentation and hopefully have some time for questions. PFM, you're like, you're all likely familiar with PFM. PFM serves as the county's financial advisor. Myself and my colleague Io, who I'll introduce in a moment, are with the consulting practice that really focuses on fiscal planning and budgeting, multi-year financial planning. I'm based in New Orleans, but we have offices across the country, including our local offices here in the state of Orlando and Miami. And this really provides us the presence to do what we need to do in order to bring you all a bunch of solutions that are time and true, time-tested and true to solving every one of your various complex problems. We are part of the PFM Group Consulting Practice, really focused on issues of management and budget. That includes looking at ways to improve government efficiency, looking at day-to-day operations. But ultimately, we are also the leader in providing multi-year financial planning to local governments across the country. In the last 10 years, we've done about 50 financial plans and another 20 for school districts across the country. So it's a pleasure to be working with you all. I'm joined by my colleague Io Ala Dusami, who's been excellent in helping to really pull together the forecast and the model that hopefully, if time permitting, will be able to share a little sneak peek with you all, but that ultimately will be delivering and passing on to the county staff. So our work began, we started our contract in March of this year to develop a multi-year financial forecast for the county. So as a part of this, we assess the county's historical general fund revenues and expenditures to understand the drivers of your financial projection, pull together the model. The forecast itself is really focused on the below items highlighted on the screen. Forecasting your financial trajectory over the next five years. Analyzing some key demographic, economic, budgetary trends that impact your finances and providing recommendations on some best practices around financial and budget management and fiscal policy. So as I said at the end, not only do we have a much fuller report than the one that I'm going to share with y'all this morning, that we've shared that really outlines how the model works, all of the assumptions, the key drivers, things to keep in mind, and also shares, we're going to be sharing and training the staff on the actual tool, which is an Excel-based financial model that you all will be able to update on a regular basis so that now you all are able to consistently see a five-year outlook from your annual budget. So this morning, I'll share a little bit about the forecast, talk about some of the assumptions, and talk a little bit about some of our findings and items to keep in mind for a path forward. As you all know, you all procure this work. A multi-year financial forecast really offers a diagnosis of your finances. It's considered a best practice by S&amp;P, Fitch, as well as GFOA. And the forecast that we provide is in a dynamic, easy-to-update, multi-year Excel-based model. And it helps to sort of reflect what the county's trajectory, if you maintain the status quo. So if you consider yourself taking your hands off of the wheel over the next five years, making no major changes, what would the financial position of the county look like? So when we're creating this forecast, we go all the way down to the line item level of detail. We worked with county staff to understand the nuances of not only your financial policies, your structure, your financial data, and then we apply growth rates associated with those major categories that helps to build out the actual forecast itself. The forecast is built on the FY '25 adopted budget and then applies growth rates to those projected years. And of course, assuming no corrective action, which we'll talk a little bit about in a second, it shows what the financial forecast of the county would be. For the model, we make sure to really integrate in your key elements. The model is primarily focused on the general fund, but does have the ability to consider the impact of some of your other major funding streams that are incorporated as you all conduct your business. It incorporates your reserve, your reserve policy, and that policy is incorporated into the model. So within the baseline itself, which I'll show you in just a couple of slides, it's projected to have a consistent 15% of total operating expenditures, which is about 54 days approximately. And then your reserve fund budget, budget, fund balance, excuse me, ranges from about $22.3 to $26.7 million over the course of the projection. Within the projection itself, there are various options for modeling what differences in your reserve fund balance levels look like. So if the county moved to an eight or wanted to go up to the 17, the two bounds of your ranges in your policy, there's a mechanism to turn those switches on and off to see what the fiscal impact looks like over time. Let me talk a little bit about the baseline projection itself. So the baseline takes into account your historical data from FY 2019 to FY 2024 and then projects out to from FY '26 to FY 2030. You'll see when we get to the baseline slide in just a second that it'll show your surplus deficit, which is representing county's total revenues, less your expenditures. And then your county's ending fund balance is represented. And this fund balance includes also elements of your restricted funds as well. Within these figures and calculations, we also incorporate your carry-forward amount, which is the, when the fiscal year's revenues exceed fiscal year expenditures, that availability carry-forward is also incorporated over time. And we'll talk a little bit about how that carry-forward is, at, over times, begins to decline because of the sort of structural nuances of your budget. So, so this is the Citrus County's five-year baseline projection. The forecast, as I said, is projected from FY '26 to FY '30. The blue bar is your ending fund balance, inclusive of all of your restricted reserves for the general fund. And then the gray bar is your surplus deficit. So you'll see that in projected years, FY '26 through FY '28, you have a surplus, but still a declining surplus. In the outer years of the forecast, starting in FY '29 to '30, you start to see that surplus go down into a deficit. Because the county chooses the required fund balance either year, it is possible to implement fiscal policy decisions to avoid the year-end deficits in FY '29 and FY 20, in FY '30. Some of the key drivers of the model, excuse me, include focusing on, we assume our 6% projected growth in your ad valorem taxes, 2% in sales. And then we are also assuming a 4% projected compound annual growth rate annually for personnel services relating to the sheriff, general, operating. And then around another 4% for non-elected official personnel. We assume a 9% projected growth in your retirement contributions. And then another 10% growth in your detention facility contract. And about a 2%, 2.5% growth for your capital outlay lines. And these are sort of highlighted because they are the major components of your budget that are really driving your ability to have these, the projection over time. So a little bit of, just about your baseline. You'll see here that generally, you have a, the growth in your taxes is really the driver on the revenue side of your growth. You'll see that 5.5 total revenue percent growth versus the 4.5% total expenditures. This is important to see, but is, can be a little misleading because the carry-forward amount really does operate a major portion of your base and how the city, excuse me, how the county considers and monitors their expenditures and is able to pay for their expenditures over a day-to-day basis. So any scenario that exhausts that carry-forward puts the county reserves in a challenging fiscal position within two to three fiscal years. And this is recognized here. So right now, we're showing the total percent of your total sort of revenue base with taxes. Sure.
Commissioner Finnegan has a question. Sorry for the interruption.
No, absolutely.
I thought about waiting, and then I noticed all the pages that we have to go, and I'm like, we're going to get so lost if I wait.
We have, yeah, so I think you all have the full 75-pager. We have a 25 slides, so we're, we're, we're going to keep it short and sweet. But yes, please, I would love to hear your question.
If I may, a couple slides back on the five-year baseline projection. I was trying to dig out the answer as you went on, but why do you feel like, it looks like revenues go up, which is expected because house values go up, more people are moving here?
Absolutely.
I could understand if you were saying you see the population staying flat. But why would the, why would our revenues go down in '29 and '30? What, what brought you to that projection?
Got it. So it's, it's actually not revenues going down, it's your carry-forward going down. The, the ability, that gray bar includes not only your revenues, expenditures, but it also includes the annual carry-forward amount. As you have that carry-forward, it starts off very strong, I think close to 20, I can't give you the exact number.
27.
Yeah, I think it's, it's close to 27 million, 40 minute, excuse me, 40.5 million in FY '25. That provides you a strong base to start from. Over time, going into FY '26, it drops down to 27 million, then to 19 million, then to 11 in 2028. By 2030, it's at 1.7 million. So that decline in the availability of that carry-forward is really what's driving, partially. It's the extended growth of your expenditures and then the, the decline in the carry-forward amount that's available, that's cushioning the, the surplus here.
And why do you think that's going to go down?
Because of the extending growth in here. Actually, let me pop over because I think this will help. So your carry-forward makes up 22% of your total revenue base in FY '25. Your budget, you've been, you've been balancing your budget particularly using that carry-forward. Without the carry-forward, it declines, your total tax base is 90%. And so your reliance on that carry-forward is really a, I think, a risk as a part of how you all are managing. Your expenditures itself are not exceeding your, your current revenues without the carry-forward are not able to keep pace with your expenditures. But you're able to keep that pace with the carry-forward going forward.
Well, that, I guess I don't quite agree, agree with you because we have to have a reserve budget for emergencies.
Sure.
So we need to have a large carry-forward, and when nothing happens, thank you, Lord, it has to be carried forward. I know you see that as a risk, but to me, that, that seems prudent.
No, so you're maintaining your reserve levels, which is why the blue bar in the prior slide continues over time. You're still having a healthy reserve, but you're using, because the carry-forward is used as an operating funding mechanism, as your operating expenses grow over time, that carry-forward, again, if you took your hands off the wheel and are not changing policy, changing your practices on a year-to-year basis and are letting sort of the projections do their thing, this is actually the outlook that you would see. You would spend down that carry-forward at a faster rate than you probably otherwise would have as you're making annual spending decisions.
So you're just assuming that we're going to be spending more and the growth isn't keeping up with it? So then we're going to start dipping into our carry-forward?
Yes. So you're, we're assuming, because based on how the projection's worth, you start with a carry-forward, you include that base in the start. And the, unless there is a surplus in that fiscal year, that is what's then being put back into the carry-forward in the following year. Because you're not, there's a structural imbalance between your operating revenues and your operating expenditures, you're not seeing as strong of a surplus being able to put back into the carry-forward to make that base stronger from year to year.
Commissioner Barrett.
Um, excuse me.
Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner, I'm sorry. Commissioner Davis.
I, I figured all that out. Essentially, I think, if you look at it from a, sort of a common sense standpoint, we're always told that residential growth costs more than they pay in taxes.
Sure.
And commercial and industrial pay more in taxes than they take in services. So does this, did you work with metro development forecast in terms of what, what we currently have zone, commercial and industrial and ag, which are all net positive to the tax base?
So we did, we did take into account the metro forecast projection. So those are included in the projections for the property tax, as well as any of the other economically-driven assumptions. We did use the, the Metro Forecaster's report as the basis of those projections.
Okay, so we do have a chance to potentially change this outcome with zoning decisions.
Absolutely. So the, the model itself is built very flexibly so that the, any county person could go in, change the numbers, change the percentages. So as you have updated numbers from Metro Forecaster's, as you have a different assumptions that either come down from the state or from policy decisions out of this, this elected body, you all can make those changes and see the fiscal impact over time. Not only in the first year of the, the budget, but also in future years.
Super. Thank you.
Sure. Commissioner Barrett.
I have a question, then.
Yes, ma'am.
If the reserves amount that we take every year and set aside increase. Because if we're getting more money, okay, from the property taxes, because we actually have more population, we have more businesses, so our income or revenue is increasing. Okay, I, I, I agree. The reserves should also be increasing because if I take and I increase what's coming in and I also increase, that's going to increase what I'm going to set aside. So that's why, I, I don't understand where you're getting negative numbers for this, you know, surplus because if I'm getting more set aside every year, it has to be growing, not shrinking.
You're, you are growing. Your revenue bases are growing, but your expenditures are growing faster, which is, I think, the, the piece of this that is the, particularly when you pull the carry-forward out, the growth of your expenditures is far outpacing your, your revenue base.
And that's using the metro forecasting projections as to what we're going to grow as a county.
Yes, ma'am.
We're still going to lose.
You're still going to have your expenditures growing faster than your revenues. And a lot of that is built on, I would say, assumptions and, you know, decisions that may not be fully in your control. The detention facility contractors is growing. Your costs on your elected officials, particularly out of the sheriff, are growing quite fast and make up a large percentage of your expenditure base. You're also seeing generally the growth in salaries and wages. All of that are growing at a, at a pretty high clip and make up those key drivers. I think I flagged them here. Right here. These are really what's driving your, the faster-paced expenditure growth over your revenues. I think with the continuation of continuing to think about and trying to have annual conversations about how do you balance your expenditure burden with your available revenues? Or, and/or, how do you increase your revenue diversification? How do you make sure that you're maxing out on things that will allow you to bring in more revenues on the annual basis? This gap will not be there because you all will be making the annual decisions to address any potential surplus deficit in real time. The projection itself, like I said, is a status quo. If the, if you continue as you were with no policy changes, with no effective changes, assuming the growth that you're likely to see based on the Metro Forecaster's projections on the revenue side and based on some known knowns on the expenditure side.
Well, what I, what I'm thinking is, okay, as the revenues grow, we also continue taking out the reserves.
Yes.
So the reserves have to grow because the percentage of the amount you're, you know, in other words, the amount you're taxed on, instead of 100, is maybe 150.
Sure.
Okay, so if I'm raising everything, then I still, you know, it, it amazes me how you tell me it's going to shrink. You, you tell me the expenses are going to grow that fast.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Commissioner Davis.
Let me see if I can help clarify. We have been told over and over and over that the average cost per dollar paid into the system by residents, it costs us $1.50 to serve them. We are growing too fast in residential, not enough in commercial and industrial. It costs us 70 cents to serve every dollar that they pay in. It costs us 30 cents to serve every dollar ag comes in. This has been a cliff that we've been facing for a while because of buy-right development, personal property rights. And this is why on all of our zoning cases, we need to put more commercial and more industrial in place, obviously in the appropriate places, not, you know, industrial next to a neighborhood. Okay, but these are really critical policy decisions, and I am very thankful for the heads-up.
Any more questions? I think some of this I'll also clear, clarify a little bit as we keep going. So we talked a little bit about the, the, really the dominance and the reliance on carry-forward and how that is playing a material role in your ability to continue to replenish your reserves as you want to based on your reserve policy, but also to manage your annual operating budget. This, I think, maybe helps to clarify a little bit about exactly how we're leveraging some of the different projections and particularly on the expenditure side. So 2024 increase, particularly due to a study generally closer to 4% across the board increases. Retirement contributions, we know that those are going to grow, that county share of your net pension liability. Your max growth by the contract and statute of the US Marshal are also driving your cost growth. That's a detention facility contract. And then as well as the capital outlay likely to increase closer to inflation. And then we're also assuming these likely growth by the salaries and wages in your general operating for the sheriff's offices. You're also on the sales tax side, inspecting, anticipating softer inflation over the projection period, particularly as some of the economic uncertainty continues to go about. You'll, you'll see here, we, I flagged this particularly for the detention facility. It is your fastest-growing expenditure rollup by far, largely due to the increased contracts and the statutes that govern how those funds are spent. So you'll see from FY '25 budget, you're budgeting 18.4 million in FY '25. It's projected to grow to almost 30 million by 2030. That is a huge growth, and that's a lot of what's driving the, the deficit, particularly in the out-years, is this very rapid growth that you're seeing in your detention facility contract. So a path forward, you're managing a modest structural surplus where your overall growth in your revenues is slightly higher than your overall growth for your expenditures. You have a healthy fund balance. And if current trends continue, that fund balance will continue to increase. However, the use of your carry forward does obscure your county's true financial picture. Without the yearly carry forward funds, the county is projected to run deficits starting in twenty twenty-nine and twenty thirty, even after incorporating funds that would normally be applied from the county's reserve budget fund balance. There are some steps that we would recommend. Thinking about your tax revenue, if you think back to the, the pie chart where you've got almost ninety percent when you're excluding the carry forward of your revenues coming from taxes, thinking about either how to continue to build on that base, working with metro forecasters to understand what that growth will look like over time, but also continuing to be mindful of the changing in the economy and the risk, particularly on the sales tax side, wanting to make sure that you have some diversification on your revenue, particularly on your taxes. Thinking about how you can decrease your county expenditures, particularly general operations related to the sheriff's office. If there are opportunities for efficiencies, if there are opportunities for effectiveness or coordination that can help to drive down or to plateau those costs, that's worth exploring. And then relying only on operating revenues and expenditures in order to decrease your reliance on that carry forward going forward is another recommendation that we have. Thinking about implementing controls and policies to limit that carry forward and the sort of the appropriation of those rollover funds. And then we've talked with, I think, almost all of you all over the course of our work about the various capital needs, the projects, the investments that the county wants to make, that residents are hoping to see. These are all things in there, we've reviewed in your targets for action, as well as your general fund CIP project list. Thinking about how you're prioritizing that work, leveraging the fact that you're able to now see a multi-year forecast, thinking about how you, which of those projects have the ability to, with the investment in one year, hopefully see some savings either in maintenance costs or other upkeep costs that you're already carrying the burden for. If you are able to sort of capture what those savings are by the new investment, you're then able to reinvest those costs into new and more projects on your list. And then obviously continuing to update that baseline forecast and the key assumptions. This is not a prediction, it's a projection. So these assumptions are meant to be reevaluated, they're meant to be reviewed regularly. And I think they're appropriately meant to be scrutinized to make sure that the projections themselves are meaningful and are realistic based on the experiences of the county, the economy, as well as the policy decisions made by this body. Some other things that are not on the slide, certainly making sure that any of your available fee revenue are maxed out or that are, you're maximizing that fee revenue. Evaluating what the cost recovery costs are is another, a good best practice that many municipalities who are considering on the revenue side, making some of those adjustments. I'm happy, this is, I think, the very end of the conversation, but I'll, I'll flag some of the lists. We have in the model already incorporated in the list of capital projects from your most recent targets for action, but also some of the projects that folks have highlighted. Known knowns around if there was needs for additional disaster funding. If you change your fund balance reserve level, that's assumed in the model. There's a lot of, if you change staffing numbers, those capabilities are already built into the model. So they, all you have to do is turn a switch on to see the fiscal impact of those items over time. So ensuring alignment with near-term finances is another recommendation that we have as you all are continuing to evaluate what your needs are and how you want to leverage available funds for your very important priorities. So happy to answer any more questions y'all have. I can also share, do a little preview of the model if you would like to see it. We have it available to show you all as well.
Commissioner Barrett?
The only question I have for you is.
Yes, ma'am.
This is based on us being able to assess property taxes on all the residents of Citrus County, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, did you take into consideration what the legislature up in Tallahassee is discussing about a five hundred thousand dollar homestead?
We did.
Exemption for every property.
We did. So the model includes a scenario where we effectively apply that assumption and it is detrimental. It would be detrimental to the county, it would be detrimental to local governments across the state. But yes, we have incorporated that in the model so that you can see the fiscal impact of that, that policy choice.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to see an example of the model.
Sure. One moment while we pull it up. Is there any other questions while we're getting to model?
I do.
Commissioner Davis?
When we had our discussion prior on Zoom, I had brought up the Citrus Hope Project, the homeless shelter. And you said that you have run numbers before for other clients and so forth, or could run those numbers for us. The, I am struck by the fact that it is roughly seventy-five dollars a day to keep, and we have basically a mandate from the state to arrest homeless people. Our own contract monitor says that people are serving life sentences three months at a time. They cycle in, they cycle out, they cycle in, they cycle out, and it's seventy-five dollars a day. All of the Hope properties are twenty-five dollars a day to just under thirty dollars a day per person. So of course, we have to approximate how many are in jail because they're homeless. But here's the, the killer number that our much beloved and respected, recently retired Florida Health Director locally, Tito Rubio, said that we have a line item on our budget where we have to reimburse Medicaid for indigent care. And it was one point eight million dollars this year. That's a pretty huge number. So at Tampa Hope, for example, they have a Tampa General box where they, people go into the box and then they do telehealth. And so all of that healthcare is taken care of at these homeless shelters, which keeps homeless folks out of the ERs and out of our taxpayer pocketbook. So I would be super interested in what those numbers are because ultimately, I believe if the numbers pan out the way I think they will, that we would end up saving taxpayer dollars by giving them some stipend, not the full savings, but say half the savings and then half of it goes back to the taxpayers. So I'd be really interested in those numbers.
Sure. And so the, we're actually sitting down with, again, the county staff that we've been working with have been fantastic. And the, I think the ability for the model to incorporate those assumptions, the numbers that you're talking about, what the current costs are, what the projected savings are, and what the ongoing operating costs are very easily to be incorporated into the model so that you can see that full fiscal impact over time and sort of be able to navigate what the upfront costs are, if any, but also what the savings are over time. So that, with, with the assumptions, that's certainly something that can be incorporated with that.
And I can certainly work on the other municipalities that have Hope shelters to find out what they've, what savings they have realized for their taxpayers. I know the mayor of Tampa promised a million dollars the first year and five hundred thousand in each ensuing year and she kept it at a million because the savings were presumably that good in the results. So I'm a big data hound. I always try to, you know, numbers don't lie, so.
We love data.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. And I'll say that the, the model itself has been shared with the county, so you all have it. It is in your possession and available to see and review. If we're still navigating some of the technical difficulties, be happy to find time to connect with you all and do another webinar to walk you through it and to share, answer any questions that y'all have.
Well, while we're waiting, I guess. Mr. Howard, I would be interested in, you know, you've obviously been working with this. One of the things that I felt like was important is, as opposed to setting, coming in half a billion dollars a year and just doing a one-year budget, it's almost like we could forecast out maybe three years. Not to say it's not going to have some movement in it, but you kind of have a benchmark of where you're going year over year. But given the information that they have provided and taking into account metro forecasting's predictions, what, what is, how do you summarize this? And as our CEO of our county and where are we going?
Yeah, I think, you know, you know, I always say hope is not a plan. And what's so great about the tool they're going to leave behind, we've had lots of discussions, but the tool that you're going to leave behind will allow us, like Commissioner Barrett had mentioned, you know, some of the legislation, whenever that happens, we can look at that and make those assumptions and be more forward-thinking as we're looking to the future. And, you know, at some point, if these predictions, they may, they may, they're assumptions, they may become reality and may not, but we can properly plan by being more proactive. So I'm excited about that. I've been involved with biennial budgets and things like that. Many governments have tried that, some have been successful, some haven't. We've had lots of discussions, I'm very interested, and I've told Tammy this as well, that there's a variety of, you can do program-based budgeting, and I actually, I like program-based budgeting. What did the program cost me? Performance-based budgeting, those are all kind of models I would like to look at going forward. But this does give us a better opportunity to forward think. So at some point, if we want to look at whatever the project is, an animal shelter or other things, a sports, all these different things that we look at up here that I call the F-bombs, we actually have an opportunity now with those kind of data sets to be able to look at this model that we have and forecast more properly. This is going to help us to better communicate as we're going through our budgeting process. So I'm interested in that. That's a different way of doing business when you start doing multi-year budgets, but it's a good way to go as you properly plan. There's a lot of things that are going to happen we're beginning to face in the next couple of years. We can't predict that, we don't have a, a crystal ball to look at. But with all this opportunity with the metro forecast model, with this tool, we're getting to get a lot of tools that we're able to actually proactively plan for this, for this county going forward, which is going to put us in much better positioning for the future. So, so I'm excited about that. I'm excited about the tool that they're leaving behind. We're going to continue to burn up their telephones free of charge until we can do this, until we continue to do that. But this is exciting opportunity, it's a great tool to have in our toolbox.
We're thickened to the budget year, getting ready to set our new upcoming budget. So what policies do you think that we should start to implement going into this new budget? And what are some of your suggestions to kind of preset what may or may not come out of the legislature?
Well, I think you gotta, it's, it's, and I've looked at this and there's a lot of things to keep me up at night. And the corrections is one of those, obviously, you're going to have to fund that. Sheriff's, all these things are going to have to be funded with local taxes and things like that. That's going to be a different way of doing business. Ultimately, when everybody looks at that, where those conversations go, we're still trying now to, behind the scenes, balance right now. I'm working with staff now as we're, we're looking at this five million dollars additional for road resurfacing, which is general fund money. But I think going forward, what I call the true-up money is what I would truly call that, I call it carry forward. We probably got to look at that a little bit closer and see how's that going. I would like to have a little bit more reserve. That's kind of me used to having, I will tell you, the last community I served in, you can look at my resignation letter that I gave, and I was very proud. I left him a thirty-eight percent, thirty-eight percent reserves, which is a lot of, a lot of cash forward. But you got to balance that out, you don't want to have too much there either, that's not good either. But, but I think you got to look at that a little bit. I like to have a little more healthier fund balance, that's me personally. And also be cautious of going forward when we're looking at this, but be very close to these assumptions and hopefully they're not accurate. This would be, you know, hopefully they're not accurate, but you got to be proactively planned because somebody will be setting up here and in this seat, most likely it may not be us, it may be us. But we want to put this in a better position in twenty twenty-nine and twenty thirty and be preparing for that. I'd love to continue to put more in these reserves potentially. Also look at this true-up money maybe a little bit differently, but I don't, I don't have what these policies would look at right now. I'm still trying to work right now to get us to balancing and being able to work with road reserving. We're getting very close, I think, to be able to come back to the board with, I think, some positive news on that. But it is kind of, me coming in here about thirty-something months into this, I always hear a couple of words here, Duke money, and then I always hear like this true, you know, the true-up money. So those are things that we're, we're dependent on doing different things with. So we just got to be careful, cautious and make sure those are, you know, one-time expenses, not reoccurring expenses, which I know Commissioner Cannard talks a lot about that and I, and I agree a hundred percent with him. You know, the budgeting, we want to make sure we're doing that as well, that we're not, we're putting those separately so those budgets don't continue to grow at those levels. So you're kind of starting at a bigger budget. We want to keep those separated so they are one-time expenditures. So we're not compounding these budgets going forward. But there's a variety of things, I'd love to have more discussions with you, maybe in, you know, going into January, our strategic planning retreat to see which model we work at. And then I'd love to have them continue with us a little bit further along with some of these other budgeting techniques actually work across the country, which ones are working, which ones are not. And I've done a variety of them. I've done everything from zero-based budgeting, which quite honestly, you'd never start at zero. You have, as a county, you have expenses, expenses we can't get rid of. But program-based budgeting, performance-based budgeting, not what the outputs were, but what was the outcomes? What was the investment, what was the return on investment for the dollars that you spent? So those are all conversations we're going to have, we're probably going to have a lot sooner based on what comes out of Tallahassee soon. I probably went around the circle with you. But I think it's a little too, too, too soon to make policy decisions at this point, just coming out of this with this data, plus trying to get your input today. We'll kind of determine what we bring forward. We can work closely with our consultant and staff to see what are some, some things that we could actually come forward with some policy improvements that would be a little more forward-thinking to continue to take us into this new modeling that we have for the future.
Well, I guess my biggest concern is the citizens have spoken very loud and very clearly that road resurfacing is at the top of their priorities. And we're struggling to come up with the additional funds to kind of make it whole for the same amount of money that we spent this year to spend next year. And if I'm interpreting what she's saying correctly on the cash carry forward, that's kind of how we've been balancing that out. And we're, we're cutting into that, we've used that up. And I asked what the number was in new growth, just dollars for new growth, and it was three point two million dollars. So that took a half a billion dollar worth of investment just to get three point two million dollars in tax revenue. So that's, when you think about like how many houses you'd have to have for that versus maybe an industrial park and our commercial, and then you think of the intrinsic values of what that puts back into your community if we're creating higher-paying jobs and more wages. So for me, I'm looking at it, I really do believe that we have to really kind of, as board policy, start to focus on some revenue diversification from, what are we, what are we trying to attract into our community?
I think we only have about a half percent here that's industrial, so that, that's your challenging part. And exemptions and all those things are very difficult. And then you have all these cost drivers. I went back and looked, you know, over the last decade, at one time, you were only putting about two million dollars a year for road resurfacing. And I don't have to tell you, you've got, you know, almost two thousand miles of road, that's a lot of roads. So we definitely have an issue with all those things. And of course, you're competing every year for expenses. You know, utilities have doubled, our cost of health care is, all these, everything is going up, property liability, insurance, all those things. So this is very difficult. You know, some of the issues that you're facing here, some of the challenges, but with challenges, there's opportunities. And I think we got to, you know, think differently. And you got to have, got to kind of look in the mirror with this data and say, here's where we're at. You can either just look at it or, or do something with it and proactively try to take steps to execute for the future and see which direction you can go in. So I think this is all good, good conversation to have, good information moving forward. But like you said, you have to defer, you have to diversify the economy, which is difficult. We just came from a town hall meeting in Floral City, so you're balancing that out. And oftentimes I talk to people and have a little bit of fun with them and say, hey, you like those rolls at Texas Roadhouse? And they all say, yes. And a lot of times I ask the ladies and some of the guys, do you like Hobby Lobby? And they say, yes, I like that. And how about Five Guys, the burger there? Yes. And I say, what do we call that? We call that growth. And then I get another email from another citizen that says, I'm concerned about my medical doctor. I've had him for thirty years and they're leaving. Well, how do we, you know, employ other doctors in this community and things like that? And it's got to be quality of life initiatives and things like that. And then as you get on the industrial side, you have to have competitive advantage to bring industry to this community. So they're looking for a lot of things, so it's a balancing act. This is not unique, unique to this government. They're facing these challenges across the state, I can tell you that with my colleagues. So I do say, I think the light at the end So I do say, I think the light at the end of the tunnel continues to be bright, but we just got to remain focused and diligent and, you know, take this and use these tools that we have proactively to the community and community to communicate that out to the public. And, you know, everything costs money. I wish it was, didn't cost money, and I wish it didn't double. But based on your analysis here, you continue to see a lot of things that need to be taken care of, corrected, and things like that. And that's only a little bit of, not a bite of that apple that we can actually proactively do. So I'm excited about going forward and working with this board for policy improvements and continue to communicate that with the public, some of the needs that we have. But we're making progress, but there's a cost associated with all that. I just, I looked at our numbers. I think there was almost a 300% increase in just equipment alone, you know, new expenses and things like that. So all these things are continuing to go up. I'm not seeing anything going down at all, so.
Commissioner Barrett.
Administrator, I have a question. Having been to the meetings last weekend with the legislators, and their talking property taxes are going to be going down for all the citizens in the state. Okay, with that, maybe going away completely and them coming up with a different way to get money for the counties, can you, at this point, come up with a number that we could see physically? If we, if they were to take, and everything was, everybody was at $500,000 or up, were the only property taxpayers? In other words, that's the numbers that were thrown at me at the meetings I went to, that they're considering anything $500,000 property value or lower pays zero. That eliminates a lot of things in our county. So I'm looking forward and I'm saying, okay, what is the possibility when they pass this next year? How much money are we actually going to have to work with? You know, that's a forecast that I'd like to see. How much will we have? So I know it's going to take time to do it, but could you possibly do that?
I think we will do our very best.
Okay, thank you.
And I think that's a discussion. I don't think that, I was in Tallahassee a couple of weeks ago, and I'm not going to name names, but somebody was in there with a group of us county managers. And they said they've never seen a time in Florida as now where we have folks trying to make decisions that have no experience and boots on the ground in local government. Because what do we do with our corrections? I mean, all those folks, what do you, you don't pay sheriff's office. You know, you wouldn't have any law enforcement, no public works, all the roads you want to do. Actually, what we're balancing now, that's general fund money that we're doing road resurfacing with, you know, this $5 million. So it's all of those things. And at the end of the day, you have to have people doing this work. So it's all got to get done. So it's easy to make a decision when you don't have any responsibility or have to see what the thing is, and that's not good. So I'm hopeful, hopeful that better minds will come together and our friends in Tallahassee will rethink some of these decision points and then diversify it because you still got to pay the bills, we got to pay for all these services. And the very public, when I'm at meetings, want this board to be able to do some things. This board's being handcuffed. I mean, it's taking, you're taking local control away, which is bad. This is job stressful enough already to, all the stuff that we're doing now without somebody saying, hey, you don't have any funds to do this work. So I don't know how that's, I don't think that's going to work out real good. It's not going to be a good ending, I think, with that. So hopefully, better folks will think through that a little bit and where's that funding going to come from? And if you look at that, you've looked at that, and we're not based totally on property taxes, but you're looking at that. The general fund money I came forward with is about $8 million of new revenues, but our expenses are over $13 million. I mean, so I'm having to balance all that out. And you have 30,000 more population than you had many years ago. And you have less employees today than you had back in '07, '08. So in fact, you're actually doing this with less. But, you know, the services are going to continue to go up, the demands are going to go up, all those things. And when you say, hey, move to Florida, keep Florida free, well, it's not free for any of this local service. I mean, our good friends, I think, has walked in, the judges, all these things, they have to do, the courtrooms, all the expenses the board has to do, it's all F-bombs. It's expensive to do all this work. So I'm hopeful that they'll consider our thoughts into this, and we have real meaningful dialogue. And we don't do what a lot of governments have done in other places around the country, it's just a tax shift. And that's something that I hope that doesn't happen, so thank you.
I think they've figured out putting, I think I'm puppeteering to my colleague Io, who's in the other room. So I'll share, shout out, yep. Is there a way to share this screen? Oh, okay, it's already up there. Thank you. Okay, Io, so if you can scroll down a little bit, this is the baseline tab. And you'll see it's organized by various categories, showing your total revenues. If you pause there, Io, you see your total revenues and then your revenues plus that carry forward coming into account. Io, if you'll scroll down a little bit.
We can't see that, just so you know.
Yep, if you can zoom in, Io, please, as well. Thank you. Maybe one more. Yep, there you go. So scrolling down, you'll see the various different elected offices, if you can continue scrolling. We'll get to the bottom, the county's personnel expenses, other expenses. So here's where you'll see your total expenditures and then that growing surplus deficit towards the out years, and then along with your ending fund balance. So as that surplus continues to grow, it's starting into the ending fund balance. And then it's being, if you scroll down a little bit more, Io. Thank you. You'll see your reserve budget, fund balance policy truing up to that 15% and then being reallocated back into your carry forward. Io, if you go to the initiative manager, please. There we go. So this is the tab that we are referencing where we've already preloaded in a bunch of the various projects, initiatives, potential things that we've heard from conversations with the county team. You'll see at the top, it's got that same fund balance ribbon that y'all have been seeing over the course of the presentation.
I can't see any of that.
Yeah.
It's not, yeah.
You said, you said that we'd be able to get this?
The county has it, yes. This is yours. But if you focus in on that top bar, so I'll turn on a couple of things, but if you focus in on the very top graph at the top. Io, why don't you turn on Animal Services Building? You'll see the fiscal impact of funding that project. And then Io, if you scroll down and turn on, while keeping on the animal services.
It's all right because we can't see anything. So it's, yeah.
It is, it is a dynamic, like I said, it's a dynamic tool where you turn the switches on, you see the fiscal impact over time. And the county has the ability to easily drop in additional projects. So there's probably 150 different lines of places of items, scenarios that you all can incorporate in there and then have the ability, and we'll be working with staff later today to get them trained up on the model. And as Administrator Howard said, we are around. So if you have questions, if there's needs, we're happy to be able to fulfill those with you all.
Very good. Thank you so much. And Commissioner Finnegan, I believe you had a question?
I didn't. I was just following up. Mr. Howard said, you know, a tax shift. And I know you have mentioned this a lot, Commissioner. You know, if it came to greater reduction of property taxes, people would still have to pay, it wouldn't be a shift just to everybody over the $500,000. It would, we would have to MSBU everything. And then no one wants to pull exemptions off. You know, it's not been popular about people that really pay no taxes. But that's, I fear that's what it would have to come to. Everybody would be paying for police officers. Everyone would be paying for fire. Everyone would be paying for.
The thing that makes that tough is you have MSTUs which follow ADVLOREM and the exemptions. And then you have MSBU, so the, how you can apply them are different?
I understand, but everything that we would have to pull out, we would, which I don't like because I do feel like it's a tax shift and it all comes with a cost. You know, we have to hire people to figure that all out, to make it legal. So if that does happen, people will not be free, I think, of paying anything. But it would be very expensive to the community to shift that back around.
I always say sometimes, I was in Tallahassee and somebody had told me, I'm not going to point out, but they said, hey, some folks sometimes are given, they're asked to draw a horse. Sometimes it ends up looking like a camel. They didn't mean that, but that's what they get at the end of it. So I hope they, whatever they're trying to draw, that they draw it correctly and it doesn't impact us and harm us because we don't want them to hurt us and harm us. So I'm hoping that we'll continue to work with our friends in Tallahassee and we'll continue to find a better path forward that doesn't hurt anyone.
Well, we have roughly, what, $45 million in state mandates that, I think the lion's share of that comes out of ADVLOREM, so.
And I'd be very open. I've had a lot, you know, a few discussions with the DOGE team. I think they're going to rebrand the name. I'm always open to cost-saving opportunities, opportunities for more efficiencies. I've got a lot of thoughts on that statewide. I actually had a little bit of a background in purchasing and things like that in the past. I think there are opportunities to have the tax dollars actually even be more efficient, more effective. But I think you can do that on a statewide basis on programs and things like that. So I think there's some opportunities or efficiencies. I'm all in. I told them that, if you can come up with the technology enhancements, improvements, I'm the first one that's going to roll up my sleeves. Actually, I think we were the, one of the first of three counties that voluntarily went forward and said, you know, we've given them all the data and things like that. So I'm excited about that, those kind of opportunities and welcome those opportunities. But I think when they get here, I kind of had discussions with them. I hope they find money. I haven't found it. I haven't found all this surplus and everything like that, that the state is enjoying right now at this point. So I welcome those opportunities for cost-saving initiatives that are beneficial to the community, but we still have to provide these important services to our community at a local level.
Thank y'all so much for having me.
Thank you. Thank you for being here.
Of course.
All right. Well, if there is nothing else, we'll move on to our space needs.
Chair. Did we open it up to public?
Pardon me? Oh. I'm sorry, we're going to go to open to the public, but anybody in the public will need to address the five-year financial forecast. Come on, Eric. Okay. All right, we will adjourn the five-year financial forecast and we'll move right on in and open up the workshop for the space needs, so.
Can we have a few minutes to get the meeting up?
Sure.
Thank you. It's not 10 yet.
Oh. Oh, you're right. Okay. Get up, jumping jacks, get moving.